Chloe, are you ready or you tell me?
Hold on one second.
Chloe, you ready? Can't hear you.
I can hear you, Charlie. I'm sorry. We're trying to get Jacob in here. And, oh, he's, he is. He's at, he's in as a panelist and we've got Jacob. Okay, I think, I think we, okay, so we are ready to go, Charlie.
Everyone's, commission members here except Sunday or?
Correct. We're still trying to get Sunday in. If you wanted to go ahead and start, we can keep.
I think I'll go ahead. Yeah. Okay. I'd like to welcome everybody to this special meeting of the City of Charleston Planning Commission. Since this is a special meeting, the only thing on the agenda is an update or updates from staff on our comprehensive plan. So comprehensive plan updates. My name is Charlie Carish and this is new to us, this Zoom meeting. So if you'll be patient with us, we certainly appreciate it. We'll get through it and I think it'll be fine. I want to introduce to you the commission members. I'll just read them off. Mr. Jimmy Bailey, Ms. Erica Harrison, Dr. Eddie Irons, Ms. Donna Jacobs, Ms. Angie Johnson, Ms. Sandy Lempasus, Mr. Harry LaSane, Mr. Sean Flue. The process today is I'm going to ask Mr. Chris Morgan to introduce anyone that's going to be participating in the updates. The different, and introduce us to the panelists. And then he will give us segments of updates. At that time, after each segment is done, we'll take questions from our planning commission members. If they'll raise their hand, we'll acknowledge them after each segment. And we'll go through that. And then afterwards, when we're through, we will take public input comments, which I think Mr. Morgan will direct that. So unless there's any questions, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Mr. Christopher Morgan to take it over and introduce anyone who else who will participate in the meeting today and the panelists.
Okay, it would help if I unmuted myself. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we will go through some of these slides and I'll do the introductions via the slides. So let me get moving with these. And now I realized I can't move my slides. There we go. All right, so we need to kind of quickly go over this virtual, oops, went to the wrong thing. Meeting pro lord. I just went all over the place here. Okay.
Christopher, we can see the virtual meeting protocol slide. So that's the one that you're currently presenting.
I just went off that and I don't know where it is on my screen. An auspicious start.
You want us to read that, Christopher, or what?
I'll come right over for you.
That's why I asked everybody to be patient. We never know.
Yeah. I don't know what screen this is. I have no idea.
Accidentally expanded. Where's your mouse? How do I get it over here?
Because I don't really want it on here. Yeah, there we go. I went way down into it. Okay.
So we're going to.
There we go. So I advance from, I'm used to having my little screen over here. So I advance.
You get the mouse over here. See it on your tablet here?
Yeah.
You can just use this here.
That's what I want. Yeah.
So now you can advance that way.
Okay.
Okay, so you're on virtual meeting protocol. I don't know if you want to start with the other one first?
Yeah, I wanted to go to that first. So, yeah. Okay, okay. Can everybody hear me now? I'm sorry about that. Jumped across.
Just a little house, I'm sorry, just a little housekeeping. I think Angie, Ms. Johnson, have she enabled her video? I think that's what I was getting the text on. Enable her video and I seen Miss Lempasus with us. I'm sorry, Chris, you go ahead.
Okay, okay. So of course, in this meeting today, we're going to have the updates and introductions to consultant teams. We are going to review our revised schedule for the plan and activities, along with how our department is handling the comprehensive plan update from a staff standpoint. And we'll have some overall discussion. It's going to be in a public meeting format. We have with us today, of course, as the chairman said, the members of the planning commission, city staff that are going to be taking part in today's presentation, or myself, planning manager Jacob Lindsay, our overall department director. Also in today is Philip Overcash, Chloe Stuber, Eric Coleman, our West Asher project coordinator Jim Hempel, and Marcy Clark, who is, Marcy Grant, who is our clerk. The video microphone have been disabled for all the attendees. All of you all who are participants, of course, have access. And then chat and Q and A functions have been disabled for everyone. The proceedings are being recorded. Whenever folks give, folks speak, it's asked to give your name first so we can know who's speaking. Members of the public who are speaking today had to register by 12:00 PM today. Unregistered individuals who raise their hand will not be called on. Advance registration is required. And this is true of all our City of Charleston boards and commission meetings. When called on each individual, provide a comment, must state their name and address for the record. And they only speak once during the public comment period, which will be towards the end of the discussion today. So we'll move on from this slide. Mr. Lindsay is going to have some background on our comprehensive plan. And I think with this slide, I'm going to turn it over to him to give a few minutes of background.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. And thank you, members of the commission. It's good to see you all virtually. And I'm glad that everyone has dived into this virtual meeting process with such enthusiasm. I wonder if we'll ever go back to real meetings in person. This one might be the preferred method. So thank you all for joining us this way. So I'm just going to speak very, very briefly about this. As you all are aware, going into our comprehensive planning process, we have, we have been preceded by many, many, many previous plans. And just recently, we've had a number of them that have led up to this effort. And they include, of course, Plan List Ashley, which you all know and remember, our comprehensive transportation plan, led by Mr. Benjamin in our transportation department, the Dutch Dialogues, which we're going to talk about a little bit more. And then most recently, our plan for the housing for Fair Charleston by our Harvard fellow, Ms. Natasha Hicks. And the ongoing and currently, currently being drafted plan, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. All of those really wonderful comprehensive projects are going to be incorporated into this upcoming Charleston city plan. And we're happy that a lot of groundwork has been laid already. So all those things are going into this effort and we're going to be incorporating that information. Now, I wonder, Christopher, if you can go to the next, the next slide, or whomever is driving, maybe Chloe, that's you. Thank you.
Hold on. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's our next one. Thank you, Christopher. For those of you who participated in the Dutch Dialogues process, these probably, these slides probably look familiar. And if they're new to you, they represent only a very, very small snippet of the comprehensive work that was done during the Dutch Dialogues by our many consultants and the many stakeholders and citizens who contributed to this effort. And this Dutch Dialogues process was the first time that the city has had such a broad and collaborative look at the way that our city interacts with water and the way that we manage water in our city. We've never taken such a comprehensive look at it and we've never had such an open dialogue. And those recommendations represent a different way of doing things than how we have done them in the future. And one of the things that we're thrilled about is bringing on the same group of consultants who helped us with the Dutch Dialogues. And they're going to be some of the folks that you have a chance to talk to today. And this comprehensive plan is a seamless continuation of the work that we did during the Dutch Dialogues. And that work, of course, was adopted formally by our city council. However, this was different. This time around, we're going to be giving the same methodology and the same way of thinking about water, the true force of an adopted plan, an adopted master plan, which is going to be something that has a lot more sticking power, staying power and influence than the master plan and the recommendations from the Dutch Dialogues. So we're really thrilled about that. So Christopher, maybe if you want to go to the next one. Thank you. Okay, and just close a few comments here after that preamble. So I think you all are aware of this, that even before the pandemic, even before all of the nationwide and global calls for change that we've heard just recently, before any of those things happened, I think we all have sensed that the City of Charleston is at a turning point. We clearly have to deal with sea level rise, climate change, the increasing frequency and severity of storm events. These things are coming at us faster and with more strength than they ever have before. We've all felt it. We know that we have a major challenge in the loss of diversity in our city. And in housing attainment, it's harder and harder for folks to gain housing in our city. We know that we have a challenge about equitable transportation, but everybody being able to move around our city in a way that doesn't put an undue burden on those. And frankly, that gives us a way to get around in ways that aren't just in our car. And all of those challenges are complex and they are interrelated. There is no single solution for any of them. And that's why we've taken this approach to the comprehensive plan, which you all know, and we're doing that with y'all's help. The, anything really excellent is hard. And that's what this process is going to be. In many ways, we have not hired a single person. We haven't farmed this out to a shop. We've got four really wonderful consultants on. And that's what the meeting today is about, to give you all a chance to talk to these folks and to have a conversation with them, to discuss our process with these consultants, each of them bringing their own expertise and, and helping us to confront these complex and interrelated challenges in a way that we never have before. So I just want to say personally that I am really, I have never been as excited to deal with these challenges and to be a planner in the city than I am right now because we have, I think, some of the best people on board to help us. We have all of you as planning commissioners to help us guide this process. We have our planning, we have our city council who have confronted these issues and continue to do so. The stars are aligned for us to take on these challenges. And with that, I will hand this back over to Mr. Morgan, who is going to introduce your consultants and give you all a chance to engage with them. So thank you so much for joining this meeting and thank you for helping us kick off this Charleston city plan.
Okay, thanks, Jacob. So we've got four different consultant teams, three of which you're going to meet today. They are for our Water Impact and Land Use Analysis Wagner and Ball, for our Housing Analysis Community Data Platforms, and for our Public Engagement and Outreach Community Solutions Consulting LLC, and Aseco and Civic Communications. And I will let each of those groups kind of give a quick introduction to what they will be doing. We're going to start first with Wagner and Ball. And I believe on the, in the meeting today, we have Dale Morris, Director of Strategic Partnerships with the Water Institute of the Gulf, and also David Wagner, who's Principal with Wagner and Ball Architecture and Environmental Planning. And then Andy Sternard, who's an architect and urban designer and project manager with Wagner and Ball. And with that, I'll let the three of them give you a little quick introduction.
Is, can you hear me? This is David Wagner.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carrish, planning commissioners. It's an honor to work for you. So as you see, I'm here with my colleague Andy Sternad and Dale Morris, who's with the Water Institute, but has been with us in this process of Dutch Dialogues since after Katrina, when he was with the Dutch Embassy. And he's my compatriot in all these efforts that have been fruitful elsewhere, I hope, for the people for whom we've worked and with whom we've worked in Norfolk, as well as New Orleans and now Charleston. Also here today that I think we have two local parties, if they're not on the call, at least they're with us in mind, Joshua Robinson of Robinson Design Engineers and Aaron Stevens of Circulus. And if they are on the call, I'd be happy if they could say hello and see their faces. It's, as I say, a privilege, but also responsibility as an architect to work in Charleston. Charleston is a design city, 350 years of history, which in American terms is long, in at least the Western conception of America, long. But especially in this time, as Jacob said, with climate distortion and warming and flooding and hopefully enough pestilence. It's, it's great for us to be able to work on the comp plan, this layer of land and water. It's, we learned after Katrina, the importance of getting the base layer right. Land and water being the base layer with biodiversity. The networks and transportation systems that interact with that above it and then the habitation all above that. But if you, if you get off with respect to your relationship with land and water, you really, you create so many problems for yourself. You spend the rest of your time just trying to bail out. So we looked during Dutch Dialogues, I think this is maybe the other point I should make. We looked during Dutch Dialogues, really at the peninsula, at Church Creek and at Johns Island. We did not, because those are each a challenge and each different. We did not look at Kane Hoye Peninsula or Daniel Island. And we did not look at James Island, at least not in a design sense. But as I say, each place is different. The people are certainly different. The people have their, their say, their say about this. But by trying to give people the best information we can about what the situation that exists today and is projected to exist in the next 10 years and 30 years and 50 years, I think we can give you a sound basis for planning. Perhaps Dale, if you would talk about whatever you'd like, but relationships especially.
Great. Thank you, David. And thank you to the members of the commission, the planning commission in Charleston for, what are considering us worthy of the work that Charleston needs in the, with the comprehensive plan. So I'm Dale Morris, presently Director of Strategic Partnerships for the Water Institute, Water Institute of the Gulf, which is a nonprofit applied technical research organization based in Louisiana. But prior to that, and I've been there for over two years, prior to that, for over 20 years, I worked at the Netherlands Embassy, first and primarily as their senior economist, but also post Katrina as the coordinator and director of the Dutch government's water work in the US. That started really with New Orleans, notably post Katrina, and grew from there to other parts of the US, Florida, California, Virginia, New York, post Andy and elsewhere. And one of the things that we did, David and I, as we started this process on our own, called Dutch Dialogues, to see what the Dutch approaches, to understand the Dutch approaches to living with water and water management and where and where not they are applicable to US cities. And it's important to understand that we did this work in a few other places. And we were eventually brought to Charleston by the Charleston Resilience Network, with whom I shared a panel in Virginia in 2015. And the cajoling and the desire from those folks to bring a Dutch Dialogues to Charleston eventually succeeded in 2018 and 2019. And I expressed my original reluctance to do work in Charleston because I wasn't quite sure that we would be able to help. But as you move through the process and we learn more, we found and discovered and uncovered this gem of a place that is under substantial risk that you all know about. And so to be able to do Dutch Dialogues and positive vision, a positive vision, not a perfect vision, but a positive vision for land and water for Charleston going forward was an honor. I feel privileged to be able to do that and I feel even more privileged to be part of this team to help Jacob and the planning, the planning staff and you folks to, whatever, to do this work for the city. Just briefly, I managed and was the project manager for the Dutch Dialogues last year. I established a lot of very important, deep relationships with folks in Charleston through that process, both within the city but beyond the city with stakeholders and community members. And I think that will go far, help us make sure that we ground our work, our analysis in what people want. Again, we did not look, as David said, to these other two areas, the Kane Hoye Peninsula, Daniel Island, and also James, James Island, but we will. And we will try to establish over the next month or so, relationships there so we can capture the value of that knowledge and understand those landscapes better. Just briefly, want to mention this and I will turn it over to Andy. Communications, you know, we, this will run through the planning staff. And I think that's necessary to make sure this all moves forward. But we intend, like we did last year, to be open and transparent and honest in what we do and in what we say. So if there's anything that we can do from our team to support the planning commission with, with answers to questions or things like that, again, we will work via the planning staff, but we intend to be, again, transparent and open and honest. Thank you.
And I'll just echo those comments. Thank you to the city and the commissioners for inviting us back. I'm looking forward to working with you again and listening and learning. Just to emphasize, we, our role is holistic but technical. We expect to be providing objective data and some objective recommendations based on land and water, but we won't be writing policy ourselves. So the translation of that data will be up to the city and the people of Charleston. So we look forward to providing that underpinning for decision making going forward.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, we might suggest that we give the commissioners a couple of minutes to ask any questions they might have of this first consultant group, Wagner and Ball, and then we'll move on to the next one.
That's, that's great, Chris. Do, would any commission members like to speak, questions, comments on this segment? I think we've got the raise hand segment, if you can let me know. I think I do, maybe not. Everybody's.
No one's, no one's raised their hand, Charlie.
Okay, all right. So that being said, we appreciate this first segment and y'all's work. And thank you for your update on this part of it. Chris, you want to move forward?
All right. All right, so community data platforms. Anna Tapp, who's our lead data scientist with Community Data Platforms, and Benjamin Maskell, project manager. And I'll let Ben and Anna take, take over from here.
Great. Thank you, Christopher. And want to echo what everyone else said. Thank you to the commissioners. The planning department has been an excellent partner so far in these early weeks. And I just really want to say how excited we are to be here. So my name is Benjamin Maskell. I'm a project manager for Community Data Platforms. I have a background in data science, behavioral health. I worked for a couple mayoral administrations in New York City, looking at issues of homelessness, housing. And all these issues are intertwined. And I think to Jacob's point earlier, I think this comprehensive plan is a tremendous opportunity to thread all these different topics together and really generate insights that drive policy. So I'm really excited to be here. With me is our lead data scientist, Anna Tapp. And as you can see, she has extensive experience in GIS, particularly with planning efforts such as this one. And she'll be a huge resource. And just to give a overview of our approach, really where we like to start is a clear and compelling question. And once we get past that question, then we can develop methodologies and we can collect data to answer that question. So that's broadly our approach. And in particular, we think visualizations and storytelling are really key to advancing data efforts. Without those clear and compelling tools, policy can't be advanced and people can't, and, and public awareness can't be built around these issues. So we really emphasize the visualization side of things. Broadly, our mandate is to map the supply of housing in Charleston, the demand, and also do a complementary affordability analysis to determine just how many of those parcels are actually affordable to people earning income in Charleston. That's the, that's the very broad view. And how we'd be doing that is we'll be building a model to predict both sale and vacation rental prices. So that's the very high level. And Jim, Chloe have been really essentially connecting us to partners in Charleston because we believe that the data only tells a certain story. So that context of community partners and understanding what's actually going on in the ground is absolutely crucial to everything we do. And I'll just finish by saying, you know, housing is such an essential resource. And we're really honored and excited to be, to have a small part in helping Charleston think through this issue. I think the real value of these data-driven tools is that they're diagnostic tools. So it allows policymakers to diagnose problems and then respond accordingly. So I always like to apply that frame. But with that said, again, thank you for having us and we're really honored to be here.
And I'll just add a little bit to what Ben said. Really great introduction. My name is Anna Tapp and I'm the lead data scientist for Community Data Platforms. And one of the things that we bring that is really unique is we try in all our modeling and in our processes to give you the most up-to-date picture about what's going on. So that's going to be our goal, to leverage this data as appropriate. But we also pull in data from consumer, commercial and alternate data sources because we believe that you need the best data possible to make your really good plans for the future. So that's the goal behind our team. So that's the goal behind our team. And we have a team of machine learning specialists who are going to work to bring some of these older data sets up to date for you guys because that's the very least that you need to plan for the future. So we're looking forward to it.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to see if any of the Planning Commissioners have questions for Community Data Platforms?
Yes, sir. If there's any questions for Planning Commission members, if you'd raise your hand, let us know. We'd love to get some input.
See that Donna has raised her hand.
I should have known Ms. Jacobs would raise her hand, and that's good. Ms. Jacobs, would you like to speak?
This is Donna Jacobs speaking. Thank you for that presentation. I just have a couple of questions. One is, I know we recently in the city did a five-year housing plan. I didn't know how y'all were going to view that or use that. I'd like to know what you're, what you consider the criteria for affordability, like what's your normal range there for us? Because, you know, affordability, I know there's a standard for it, but I didn't know if y'all are using the standard or you add something to that. And I also would like to know how you factor in, like, short-term rental effects on affordable housing, or if that's something that you assess. Thank you.
I'll just start by touching on your first point about the report. We recently spoke to Geona Johnson, who's the Director of Housing and Community Development. And that was a really important conversation for us because we see that report as being the foundation on which we build. And we really want to capitalize on everything that's, that's gone before it. Also, a part of those conversations is to get at your second point, I think, which is AMI, or thinking about average, medium income in an area only tells part of the story. So what other factors must we consider to really accurately capture affordability? Transportation being a big factor, as we've heard from different stakeholders, commute times and things of that nature. So I think it's, I think it's an evolving understanding of affordability. But I think these stakeholders, these stakeholder interviews are really pivotal to understanding what's going on on the ground and making sure we interpret our data correctly.
Yeah, and what we really seek to do is to provide you guys with the data that you need to make your decisions. So as Ben says, we're going around, we're asking people, what do you need? Specifically, we asked Geona about, you know, AMI levels, what's helpful? Do we need to go all the way up to 120 to encompass workforce housing? So we're very open-minded, especially in this stage right now. And we're talking to people to make sure that we create the data that you need to make your decisions. So we're really open-minded. And with regard to the short-term rentals and just rentals and ownership in general, we pull, part of our process is to pull in different data sources and to overlay that on your address data here in Charleston. And we're going to develop an understanding of which properties are used for which type of resident or tenant, or however you want to cite it. So we'll highlight, based on what we pulled in, we think that these are short-term rentals. We think these are, you know, like your regular 12 months, you know, typical rentals, what have you. And we're reasonably confident these aren't owner-occupied. And that'll be a part of our process and understanding because we talked to other communities who develop all kinds of different, you know, alternatives for how they want to create initiatives, to maybe convert housing from one thing to another, develop housing. We're going to give you as many options as possible in the data for you to explore your policy ideas. So does that help answer your question?
Just one follow-up. How long do you think it takes you to analyze that kind of data and bring it forward to us?
I'll let Ben speak to the timeline.
So there are economies of scale when you, when you do do data processing. So we are aiming at all data processing being complete by early July. And then we can get into the modeling and analysis phase.
Donna, that was a good question because I tell you, that's on the front of people's minds now with affordable housing and criteria and definitions of those things.
Thank you for that.
Is there any other commission members that have comments or questions? Chloe, I don't see any of you.
No, no one else has raised their hand.
Okay, great.
On to the next. The Community Solutions Consulting LLC and Aseco and Civic Communications. They are local folks, and I will let them introduce themselves. But we are joined today with Ange Davis, Eric Jackson, and Julie Hussey and Fatika Robinson.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. And so my name is Ange Davis. I go by AJ to most of the people who know me here in the community. I will be speaking on behalf of my other team members. I apologize, some of them had to travel out of town and are taking on other work projects. And so I will be speaking on our behalf. As we were introduced, we actually represent a contingent of three separate firms. I am the project co-manager, and my firm is Community Solutions Consulting LLC. Myself and Mr. Eric Jackson founded this organization last year in response to what we saw as a need in our communities for community engagement, support services, especially for projects such as this. Mrs. Julie Hussey, who represents Civic Communications, is a veteran on our team. She's the mentor that helps us with this project. She's got more, as she said, more than 20 years of successful planning and construction projects, primarily in the Charleston region. Miss Fatika Robinson from the Aseco Group is great with campaign managing, communication strategies, creative alignment with organizational approaches to engage and connect diverse communities for good. And what that all means in a nutshell is we're a group of individuals that believes in the power of community engagement. And so we want to first say thank you to the City of Charleston's Planning Commission and Department for selecting us for this project. It was definitely something that brought a level of excitement to us, as Jacob said earlier in the presentation. Being local, being people who have not only lived in Charleston, two of our team members are native Charlestonians, and I believe myself and Miss Hussey are long-term, longtime residents. We have also seen the changes with our own eyes regarding the city's growth and what that has meant to many of the residents. Our approach to community engagement is basically, we refer to that as the process of involving people in the decisions that affect them. We also have a definition of community, well, several definitions of community that we will be using in this process. The most common of which people think about is communities of place, where people identify with a defined geographic area, a council district, a housing development, or a neighborhood. But we also define communities as communities of interest, where people share particular experience, interests, or characteristics, such as our young people, faith-based organizations or groups, older populations, people with disability, migrant groups, and community or sporting groups, just to name a few. And then we also believe a, another group of community, as we like to term them, is the communities of circumstance. These are groups that have their existences based on circumstances that may or may not be within their control. And these are the individuals that we look at, such as our homeless folks, college students, transient workers, et cetera. We believe that all of these individuals will make up the communities that our team will seek to engage during this project. Working with the Planning Department, we've also been able to map out some of our priority groups in which we will engage regarding this plan. One of the biggest pieces outside of the acknowledgement that housing and water and land usage will be two of the most significant talking points, is also the reach in which we will try to make within this project. We recognize that there will probably be a need for some education. Sometimes I think whenever projects like this are undertaken, there's an assumption made that the average individual or resident understands the planning process, they understand comprehensive planning and all the things that come along with it. And what we found is both residents and locals is that's not always true. And so our approach will be making sure that we understand exactly what it is that our residents and our participants know and making sure that we can expand upon that while we are having our engagement activities. We will also, and we recognize because of the situation with COVID-19, that the approach to engagement cannot be the traditional in-person meetings as it has once been in the past. And so to that end, we have decided that we're going to take a multifaceted approach that will include some of the traditional in-person, safe-distanced activities. But we intend to use social media. We intend to use what we like to call "front porch conversations." Of course, flyers reaching out to community stakeholders who do have connections with the various communities they represent, as well as some of the tools that the Planning Department itself is developing regarding telling the story of why the comprehensive plan is important and what it will show. I think for us, the biggest piece we also want to do in this project is make sure that as many people within the city understand it, understand their role in it, understand how much their feedback and input is needed, and ensure that from our position, we do everything possible to ensure that those things happen in a timely and efficient manner. With that, I'm going to stop. I'm not sure if there's any questions for anybody, but I'm more than happy to answer them.
So any questions or comments of Planning Commission members? Thank you, Mr. Davis. Questions or comments?
I have a question from Donna.
Hey, Donna, go ahead. Thank you.
I appreciate everything you said, AJ. Just a little background for me, this is Donna Jacobs. I served on the West Ashley Vitalization Commission that helped put the Plan West Ashley together, which I consider kind of a mini-cop plan. And a lot of what you said resonated. We used every possible format we could use, and I think that's critical. The two things, one thing I noticed, I was listening to city council the night, a couple nights ago, and two people called in that realized that they could never come in and even speak during the city council. But they somehow have never come in in person, but they were able to navigate the virtual world to do it. So I really feel like having that blend is critical. And I might want to challenge you during Plan West Ashley, I used to hang out in a local barber shop here in an African-American community because I'm the oddest person in the group and had some pretty dynamic conversations. And I don't know if there's a way to create that kind of barber shop conversation in a virtual world, but it does sometimes get you just some real honest perspectives about what might need to be done. And I think it might be our challenge to figure out how we do that, like you said, front porch barber shop conversation that's kind of honest and really a listening situation. So, and I just want to hear a little bit of your perspective of what you see as the challenge to the virtual world. I know people have really come up to speed pretty quickly with this Zoom. And I wanted to hear what you feel like might be the challenges that we might learn to continue to try to make it work for us. It's, it might be our one real advantage here. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Jacobs. That is a very, very, a couple of very great points. To answer your question first, the biggest challenge we see is access to broadband internet, people having access to the platforms. I think sometimes while Zoom is a great thing, virtual meetings are a great thing for those who have access to both the technology in terms of the hardware to be able to attend the meetings and then the platforms to be able to participate. So we, as a team, recognize that the virtual piece will be but one. With social distancing guidelines in place, we also recognize that we cannot forget those who may not even be connected via the web or virtually. And those may be some of our elderly populations, which definitely we want to ensure that we continue communications with them. We cannot assume that there will be someone within their households or even their neighborhoods that may be able to have access to this, although it would be nice. So we are going to take the approach of using virtual communication where it is fitting. But also, we still want to maintain that cliche term, that human touch of being able to talk to folks and have them talk to us. Virtual is great, but we still find that there are a lot of people that are still used to the one-on-one communication, even if it's from a distance. So to your point about the barber shop, we're even looking at not just barber shops and beauty salons, but, you know, grocery stores. We recognize that we're going to have to be extremely creative and go into where people may be to make sure that we can convey, not only that this plan is taking place, but also convey the necessity of their participation and input. And so we pretty much have not taken anything off the table as it relates to how we will do that. But I do thank you so much for your input on that.
Thank you for that feedback.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Davis and Ms. Jacobs. Is there any other questions? And it is, it is a challenge to get feedback in these times. So we're glad you're up for the task. Is there any other questions or comments by commission members? If not...
AJ, you're the only one from your team here today, right?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. All right. All right, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan will go ahead if you have any other questions.
Okay. All right, so the final consultant is not with us today. She is basically going to be assisting staff with graphic design and all of the look of the plan and putting it together in a document that's very user-friendly. But she is a local individual. She's a multidisciplinary designer and registered architect based in Charleston. She's interested in the relationship between space, graphics, and branding. This screen shows some of the things that she's worked on, and we're really excited to be able to work with her and give us just a really first-class-looking plan document. But she won't be really appearing before Planning Commission as much. We just wanted to introduce you all to some of her work and let you know that we're making sure we're going to have a good-looking plan. So with that, we're going to go over our organizational chart here. And I know that's going to kind of strike fear in maybe some people's hearts. But, but we wanted to show you all that we have a broad team here working on this plan document and show you where the Planning Commission factors in. And also, you know, who are some of the key people to go to if you've got certain different questions about the plan. So obviously, in Charleston, we have our city council and our mayor. And of course, we're a strong mayor, form of government, that you see at the top of this chart. And we work for the mayor. And Jacob is our direct link to the mayor, and Jacob, of course, is the department director. So he will be responsible for the visit, vision, strategy, political capital, and final decisions related to the comprehensive plan. But he will be doing that in the context of working with you all, our Planning Commission, which is off to the side. And you all might remember that the State Enabling Act charges the Planning Commission with writing the plan. Now, of course, that relates to all different towns in South Carolina, some places where they don't have any staff at all. And you all have the luxury of having some staff members and some budgets so we can, you know, present you documents and ask you for your comments and thoughts and things like that, as opposed to actually having to compose them yourselves. But we do want you all to have a very strong sense of ownership. We want you all to be involved as much as you want to be, to always feel free to contact Jacob or myself or other folks that you'll see on this chart related to specific areas of the plan. So I'm going to go into the plan activities as you brought down on this chart. And first in those, we have research and analysis for the plan. And that's going to be led by Philip Overcash. And Philip has been here for over 20 years, I believe. Philip, and chime in and correct me if I'm wrong in this. But Philip has always been our go-to data person here in the office. And so we're excited to have him head this portion up. Jim Hemphill, who is a new planner here, he's replacing Aaron Holly, who left us earlier this year. Jim is going to be working primarily in his non-comprehensive planning time with John's Island and James Island. But during the plan, he will be helping Philip with research and analysis and a number of other things that I'll go into in a minute. And let's see, well, I just got a note. Okay, there, sorry, didn't notice that. Okay, in the economic development component, Eric Pullman, who is... In uh, the economic development component, Eric Pullman, who is on this call today. Eric is pulling double duty today because he's about to host the work, West Ashley Revitalization Committee meeting at 5:30. But uh, Eric is going to be um, helping us with our economic development component of the plan, and Jim will be his backup and assistant. For the water element, uh, that also relates to the land use, of course, the, our consultant on that is Wagner and Ball, but Jacob will be heading up direct relations with um, the water and land use elements, and Philip will be his second in line on that. The housing element, Jim Hemphill will also be working directly with community data platforms and compiling our local information as well, and Chloe Stubber will be helping him. The website will uh, related to the plan will be coordinated with Jim and um, also with Civic Communications as will, of course, our overall outreach and engagement. Now Chloe will be our key primary link with outreach and engagement, and also our key primary link with Civic Communications. Chloe, you all know, has been working with us for over a year and has just done an outstanding job on all this and actually created this incredible organizational chart too, so. We will also have outside assistance from um, outside our division by Business and Neighborhood Services, which is, that's what BNS is. They're a division of our Planning, Preservation, Sustainability Department, and also from our city's GIS Division, which is Crackerjack, very competent group that will help us with all of our mapping elements, uh, which will be significant with all the data we're going to have in there. The design of the plan, as I mentioned, Mary Mack will be our consultant on that, and Eric Pullman will be a lead contact with Mary Mack on that, as well Jacob Lindsay. Then we get to the plan creation that I will head up with Philip. And uh, we will write the plan and uh, would love your input as we're going through that, and we'll be bringing things to you all for comment and editing. So Philip and I will be kind of the key folks with that element. Just so you understand some of our inner workings also, our internal operations. Mandy Herring, who is our um, uh, operations director in the office, will handle budget and contracts. Logistics and process facilitation is Chloe, so uh, doing things like putting together slides for today's meeting and working as we get our outreach and engagement going. She'll be very involved in that. And then of course, Jacob will be the primary for all media relations. So hopefully that is helpful to you. We're happy to forward this on to anybody who would like to see the chart um, for more detail. Now we're going to take a look at the overall comp plan schedule, and I'll let Chloe give a little bit of uh, background on where we are with this, which of course, changes almost, it seems like every month as we, we learn more and more about where we're going with the world of the, the virus and other things that are impacting our outside lives.
Chris, can I ask you real quickly? And thank you. Again, Chloe, thank you for this uh, this flow chart as well. But Chris, timetable uh, for commission members, how often will we get updates? Timetable for this process, just generally?
Well, we would love to hear from you all on that today, um, and we can talk about it right now if you'd like. I mean, we would be happy to have regular monthly meetings with you all. We could, um, you know, we can set up engagement with you all as regularly as you would like. Uh, of course, any meeting that we do with the planning commission does have to be a public meeting. We will have to do, you know, until we can have in-person meetings or socially-distanced meetings, we will have to have, uh, of course, the virtual meetings. But we are happy to work on getting you all involved as much as your schedules permit and your interest allows.
All right. So we'll uh, we'll, we'll touch base on that, get some input from commission members towards the end of the meeting. Chloe, were you going to chime in on this as well? I'm sorry.
Yes, I can, I can quickly present the, the overall timeline. And as Christopher said, this is, this has already changed several times. And something to note here is that Charlie, I'm going to put you on mute, okay? Because I can hear myself through your, okay, thank you. Something to note here is that uh, we're really getting started right now. And, and so this is the beginning of our timeline. We have, uh, we were, were ready to launch, and then COVID happened. Uh, and so these past couple of months, we have been uh, getting resituated and adjusting our timeline, adjusting our plan. And so what you see before you now is a revised timeline that understands that um, you know, we have had a lot of these planning conversations, value setting, you know, looking into our complex challenges related to housing and water. We've, we've, we've been doing that um, through other planning processes. And so what we want to do in this first phase of time is, is uh, this first stage here, defining existing conditions and establishing a shared vision, is, is bring up those conversations again, inviting the public to help us understand, uh, you know, saying, this is what we've heard already through these other planning processes, through these other conversations. How, did we get this right? Is there something else we, we need to understand? And how does this, um, you know, how do we factor this into specifically the comprehensive plan? Being a land use document first and foremost. So a lot of this first stage here between June and August is going to be an orientation to what a comprehensive plan is, what we'll be doing with the city plan. Be a lot of education, looking at the data, creating a shared understanding of the challenges and opportunities that we have before us. There's will be a lot of community conversations. I'm not going to say too much about this. AJ uh, did a great job of explaining how we'll be engaging folks. We'll also be inviting third-party subject matter experts to do a deeper dive into some of these key issues, these complex issues, to help us navigate those. And then uh, in this fall, we'll be moving into applying recommendations. So we'll be doing a lot of data gathering, not just in quantitative data analysis that water team and housing team will be looking at, but also that data, those important stories that we'll be hearing from residents themselves and key stakeholders. And, and, and going into applying recommendations, we're going to, that's the conceptual planning phase. So um, looking at not just what the challenges and opportunities are, but what are potential solutions? And, and, and creating alignment, um, making sure that um, you know, what we're putting into this plan reflects the values and the priorities that residents and stakeholders have expressed. And then finally, at, at the end of this year, presenting a draft plan uh, to city council, to planning commission, to residents for feedback and, and continued discussion and review. So that is the current proposed timeline, understanding that um, something may happen tomorrow that um, will, will require this to be adjusted again. But I think, I, I feel very confident with our engagement team and our other consultants that uh, we're, we're able to be nimble and, and respond appropriately. So um, any questions regarding the timeline?
Any questions to Chloe, Chloe from commission members? Or, or any questions to Chris as well?
We have a question from Donna.
Donna, go ahead.
Thank you, Chloe. Um, that very first box, under existing conditions and establishing a shared vision. A lot of those things look like things we did during Plan West Ashley where the commissioners were just encouraged to attend. They were told when they were happening, and they were encouraged to be involved in listening. Is that what you envisioned for these things to go?
I might chime in on that. I mean.
Go ahead, Christopher.
Very good. Uh, Donna, if, if you all wanted to be involved in as many of those as possible, you know, and if there are other opportunities that would help you all understand, you know, what's going on in the community, what the, the feelings in the community are, you know, we'd have, be happy to try to work those into our schedule as well.
Well, I know you're concerned about um, having a quorum and having it be a public, you know, situation, but if you're having a, a stakeholder interview or a civic lab is already publicly published, so we would be able to attend without having any quorum issues, is what I'm asking.
I, I think that's the way it works. Um, I'd have to, um, you know, it could be that there are stakeholder interviews that are during the day that are with staff and just a couple of consultants like that. So um, they may not be always publicly announced. So we would just have to um, check in with our attorneys about how we would handle that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would think, Chris, since we're not going to have any, you know, again, if we go to some of those things, there's not going to be any motions or anything decided at them. It's more informational, I would think.
Charlie, Harry has raised his hand.
Mr. Lusane, good to hear from you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Charlie, and thanks to everybody. I, you know, uh, this is a appropriately aggressive timeline, I think. Uh, and I, you know, I support it. I would just, um, you know, we heard a lot of great things from AJ, and I think, you know, AJ, this, I think, puts a lot of pressure on you and your team. And I just, you know, I'd like to hear you tell me uh, that you're confident that, that we can get the kind of um, public engagement that we want from a wide variety of people in Charleston in this kind of timeline. Because I mean, we're all dealing with a world that we're unfamiliar with and all feel disconnected from one another, just on the commission. But you know, in the community, that uh, that sense is even greater, so um, that's it.
I can, I can jump in real quick if, if that's allowed. So yes, we, we, we do recognize, and I do want to give a tremendous puto's to the planning department who in their initial conversations with us acknowledged this. We, we talked about not just the abbreviation of, of what happened because of COVID, but if we all think about it too, we are in a significant uh, election year. And so one of the concerns that we brought forth as a team is that, uh, in that, let's say, September, October, or October, November window, we recognize that there would probably be a lot of competition for public attention due to campaign events and things of that nature. That being said, our, our team is committed to boots on the ground and connecting uh, with as many community stakeholders, including our priority groups like our conservation and environmentalist groups as well, early so that we can at least ensure we touch everyone at least once in this process. And so we are very, very, very conscious of this timeline, and we're going to work diligently to make sure that all of the people that we can within the city boundaries are touched. Um, I'm confident of that just because of the type of workers I think we all are. And again, uh, the planning department has been just phenomenal in their support of us. So um, I can pretty much guarantee we will do our damnedest to make sure all of this gets done.
Okay. Go ahead, Harry.
That's all from me, Charlie. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other questions? Uh, AJ, thank you as well. It is aggressive, as Mr. Lusane said. And we, we know there's a lot of pressure, but we appreciate your work. Any other questions or comments from commission members at this time?
And Mr. Chairman, we're going to go to one other slide here that.
Mr. Bailey, raise his hand.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Bailey, go ahead.
Uh, he's muted.
Jimmy, are you there? Can you unmute yourself?
Okay, I think I'm, I'm muted now. You know, this is my second commission meeting. Um, it was a heck of a time to, to come on. So I may not be as familiar with process or not, but I just, you know, I feel like given the uncertainty that we're dealing with and, and so forth, that we ought not be afraid um, to take another look at this timeline once we're into this process. I, I mean, I understand that it's perhaps not an easy thing to change, but um, you know, I was, I was moved by the supplemental material that was sent out a little while ago about the importance of this document and, and it being a long-term um, plan for the city. And I think there are a lot of people who um, are, have high hopes that we're going to get this right. And so, you know, if we make it into that September, October timeframe, and AJ and team are, are competing with, with too much noise out there, then I think we ought not be afraid to um, to, to step back and see whether or not this needs to be adjusted. But I agree with Harry that um, let's move forward and, and see if we can, see if we can make it work.
Thanks, Mr. Bailey. And as you said, we, if we have to step back, we want to get it right. That's the key, is to get it right, and uh, that's the most important thing.
Charlie, Ms. Harris, raise her hand.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Good evening. Got to mute yourself.
Yes, you're right. I gotta, I gotta figure this out. Let's see. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I had a question, number one. I think we brought it up at our first meeting, which was materials that, you know, we may need to, you know, review or, you know, or, or, or con, for cons, not necessarily content, but you know, the collection of ideas. Um, and where that comes from, not only, you know, from our community, but also from outside our community and information that we read or, or want to bring to the table and how we will, how we could possibly engage in that so that um, you know, we're taking, you know, we're, we're doing this 30,000-foot degree, degree view. And then the other thing too about the community engagement process, you know, um, and you know, not getting lost in the noise is, you know, one of the things that I, I like about our city and the way it's, in our government is that it's nonpartisan. So how can we, are we going to work on making sure that issues aren't partis, don't become partisan questions? If that is something that we can at least try to avoid, or how, how can we do that through our community engagement?
Okay, um, I'll, I'll jump in that. Thank you, Ms. Harrison, for that question. Our, our approach is basically to, again, provide uh, the facilitation, if you will, for the city planning department and any other officials to be present to answer questions on, on behalf of residents. Going in, we will do our best to, to set the stage, set the tone for how the engagement will be. Of course, to be totally honest, anybody that does engagement on a regular basis knows that a lot of times you can't account for every and all questions. However, when we talk about the noise of the political season that we will be running into, we recognize that uh, some folks who may not understand this process may attribute it to a political party or anything like that. We will do our best to make sure that they understand that this is um, irrespective of the political parties, that this is a part of city and municipal growth, and this is a benefit to all regardless of party affiliation. And um, we will make sure that in that process, we have folks understand that it's, this is a part of planning. And while city council will definitely vote on this, this is where the input of the public, again, is the most important part. So we'll do our best in these processes of engagement. And I, I feel confident that that's not going to be a hard thing to do, honestly, because the, the information that the planning department is putting forth and, and coming up with, and, and what we intend to add to that will be as nonpartisan as possible. It's basically going to be informational, so.
Thank, thank you, AJ. Is it, Harrison, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And I, and you know, like the other part, the first question, thank you, AJ, that, that did answer my question. But also, um, how we, how will we um, be able to either, you know, bring to the table information or review information? Or even, you know, how, how this process is working in terms of, you know, materials that we need to kind of be reviewing independently um, on our own as opposed to just looking at a, at a draft?
I could maybe. If I could uh, jump in really quickly, I, I think I'm understanding um, what you're asking. Christopher, can you go to the next slide? So one of the tools we'll be using, and I think part of leading this conversation in a way that is not partisan, is, is starting with the, the data and um, you know, bringing in the subjective analysis that our housing analysis consultants and water consultants are going to help us with. But we've been working. What we've been working on in the meantime, as we've been trying to figure out how to operate in this new environment, is compiling the information that we already have available to us, um, and, and putting, and, and starting to think through how do we communicate this? In a way that is not jargon-heavy, um, that is relatable and that is easy to navigate. And so this is just a sneak preview of a tool that we started developing. The, it's a story map. It's, it integrates with GIS platforms. So, uh, we'll have interactive maps in here, um, informational tools, infographics, visuals. So what, uh, what planning staff will be doing a lot of is, is working closely with our anal- our data analysis consultants and our engagement consultants to make sure that we're communicating everything that we're learning during this process with everyone, uh, that we're engaging with include, including planning commissioners, so that everyone is able to, um, feel, uh, well-informed, um, and, and that, you know, that there's not a, a knowledge gap or a, a power dynamic that's created between the people who, who know the subject and people who don't. So we really want everyone to feel really informed about, um, you know, the challenges that we have before us. And, and so, uh, there will be this tool and there will be others as well. So, um, Eric, I don't know if that answers your question, but, um, that, that is definitely something that, uh, we will be doing along the way is, is presenting this information, um, to everyone involved in the planning process.
Thank you, Chloe. Is any other, um, hope that answered the question, but if not, any other questions, comments from commission members? I know we want to get to the, there's a couple of, uh, public inputs. I know that Christopher said we have, but any other commission members with questions?
Ms. Jacobs does have her hand raised.
Uh, Ms. Jacobs, go ahead.
Um, and you may have answered that with this, Chloe, but there was a mention of a website. Is that going to be an independent website or something within the, um, Charleston, um, website for planning commission with regard to the city plan where? And when will that come online?
You want to answer that, Chloe? You want me to?
I can, I can start and then you, you make sure I've covered it. So right now we have a, um, it's not published yet, but we do have a landing page on our, just our city website. We have discussed doing a standalone website, but have not purchased a domain or, uh, subscribed to any other platform at this time. So, um, that, that is something that we would, we would want to have live, um, by July at the latest. So launching that very soon in the next few weeks. I don't know if you have anything else to add.
Is that we would spin off of our city website and, you know, do something that just helps facilitate all types of communication at all times of the day that people have time to take a look at info and give us comments, things like that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Um, any other questions, comments from commission members? If not, um, Chris, do we have, want to get into the public aspect, public input?
Go back to, uh, this. Um, so, um, we have, uh, a couple of, uh, letters that were submitted. And since you all don't have those in front of you and we don't have them in the PowerPoint here, I'm just going to read them quickly. This is, uh, this first one is from the, uh, Johns Island Task Force. Uh, this letter has also, we've received information that this letter is endorsed as well by the Johns Island Community Association, which are two kind of civic groups on Johns Island. So what this, uh, letter says is, um, uh, "Dear Mr. Chairman, Johns Island Task Force is a coalition of community members, landowners and nonprofit organizations dedicated to promoting the welfare of the diverse and vibrant community of Johns Island by providing places dedicated to traditional land uses, including culture, history, agriculture, forestry and outdoor recreation. On behalf of the members of the Johns Island Task Force, I respectfully submit for consideration the following regarding the city's updated land use element comprehensive plan. We understand there will be development and growth on Johns Island. However, the development must be in the right places and done smartly. To this end, we advocate for the following: Development that respects the fragile nature of the island and adds to its regional resiliency; preservation of the rural character and culture of the island outside the urban growth boundary; development within the urban growth boundary that provides a sense of place; Public access to waterways and preserved landscapes. The current effort to update the comprehensive plan is a historic opportunity to implement key land use elements, the Johns Island Community Plan from 2007, and the Dutch Dialogues from last year. The Johns Island specific land use elements that we believe are imperative to be included in the updated comprehensive plan and the subsequent zoning ordinances are: Implement elevation-based zoning, which we showed you a slide that, that relates to that from the Dutch Dialogues, to ensure development occurs where, only where the resiliency of the land can support it; limit land disturbance so that the natural water absorption properties of the land and the floor are used to minimize the impact of water events on surrounding lands and downstream properties; Codify the urban growth boundary by ordinance to ensure that rural and urban Johns Island can continue to coexist for generations; Prohibit annexations outside the UGB to recognize the sacrosanct nature of the UGB; strengthen zoning to ensure development outside the UGB is restricted to rural land uses only; provide safe and perpetual access to waterways for fishing and crabbing; and implement flight safety zones surrounding Charleston Executive or Airport to limit development thereby enhancing the safety of the community and sustainability of JZI, that's the Executive Airport, as a vital economic presence for the region. In addition, since the typology and hydrology of the island do not follow jurisdictional lines, the city and the county must work together to harmonize the comprehensive plans and zoning ordinances, provide island-wide linkage of green spaces for walking and bicycling. We offer our assistance to work with staff and your consultants to help you ensure the livability and resiliency of Johns Island. We also welcome the opportunity to work with the other Johns Island-based advocacy groups, including Concerned Citizens of Johns Island, Johns Island Council, Johns Island Community Association, by further, to further our collective vision for Johns Island." This is signed by their, uh, resigning member, John Zlogar. Uh, he is on the call today or on the meeting today. I think he had wanted to speak. He's not on our list of signed up folks, but Chloe, do we have a way?
He is. Um, that's the only person who signed up to speak, Christopher. Um, I don't actually see him on the list of attendees though. I, I, I see, um, but, uh, just, ju- just, just for the record, uh, for, for the public to know, the planning commissioners do have these letters, uh, do have these, uh, written comments available to them to read along with and, and, um, uh, i- in their inbox. So they have, they do have access to those, uh, for folks to
Okay.
know that. And, and, um, uh, Charlie, do we, so, uh, Councilmember Jackson is requesting to speak even though she didn't sign up to speak. Do we want to make an allowance for her to speak?
I think we certainly do. Anytime we have a council member or anybody, I, I, we don't have any, uh, let me ask you that. I think there's only other one, one other.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go ahead. And can we read the letter and then give Ms. Jackson? Is that okay, Ms. Jackson?
Sure. Okay. The other letters from the Preservation Society of Charleston dated June 10th, uh, to the Planning Commission. It says, "The comprehensive plan is the single most important document in shaping the city of Charleston's future and determining the path towards a resilient and thriving city over the next decade. Charleston desperately needs a vision for where we're going and an effective plan to get us there. As a city, we must ensure maximum public involvement throughout the comprehensive plan update process, which Mr. Lindsay pointed out, for Charleston, that means meeting in person during the city council meeting on April 28th. The Preservation Society of Charleston fully supports city staff and their efforts to continue with the update process during this time, but remains extremely concerned about the feasibility of executing a successful comprehensive plan on such compressed timeline. As public engagement process, well, as the public engagement process will not begin until late summer at the earliest, we believe that a February 2021 deadline will not allow the time and attention necessary to achieve a quality plan. The PSC urges you to not allow this critical process and plan to be rushed, which may mean pursuing a deadline extension from the state government. Secondly, we feel the planning commission members should be engaged to a greater extent in the update process. The planning commission members bring the expertise and experience necessary to drive a thoughtful approach to the plan update and should be meaningfully integrated into the process. Preservation Society stands ready to assist the city with the comprehensive plan update and looks forward to discussing partnership opportunities further." This is signed by their executive director, Christopher King.
Thank you. So both of those have been read into the record and, and we'll get copies of those. Uh, Councilmember Jackson, we'll hear from you, but I also want to thank you because you regularly attend our meetings and do what a few council members do. So we appreciate your interest and we'd love to hear from you.
Right. Councilmember Jackson, you've been given permission to speak.
So actually, this is John Zlogar. Uh, I wasn't able to get on and, uh, Carol, uh, Ms. Jackson was kind enough to send me a link and I guess it turned out to be her link. So, uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Jackson. Um, and again, I'm John Zlogar with the, uh, Johns Island Task Force. And, and thank you, uh, Christopher, reading that out. And I hope, uh, all the members have a chance to read the letter. But again, I just want to reiter- reiterate two things in terms of, I think it's key that we, um, get the elevation-based zoning done, uh, that's recommended by the Dutch Dialogues. And also the other recommendation of the Dutch Dialogues is limiting the disturbance of the land and flora. Um, and so the, the other thing is just to, again, reiterate that, uh, we're here, uh, as a organization, as an island-based organization to assist staff and, uh, the consultants in any way you see fit. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Zlogar. We appreciate your input. Um.
And Mr. Chairman, Ms. Jackson is there and wants to speak. I don't know if she's on the same line, but I am getting a message that she would like to speak.
Well, if she can hear us, we'd love to hear from her.
Okay, I, um, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I, um, I really do appreciate having the chance to, uh, I, I, I can't believe how much I've missed the planning commissioners and all the good work that you do. So we didn't expect that it would be this long. So it's very, it's very gratifying to see you all back in the saddle. And I wanted to greet, um, Wagner and Ball Team in particular. We've missed you also. I know that people have been, um, cherry picking your brilliant minds ever since we said, um, farewell, but not goodbye, uh, back in 2019. So having you also, uh, by our sides as we undertake something that will be a legacy for many of us, to leave to Charleston and our future citizens. I'm really excited to see all of the, um, preparation that's been done. I've been waiting to have these, um, public sessions. So the fact that we are now, um, poised to probably be more organized and I would say the lean mean fighting machine that I know that, uh, Jacob and the mayor and, um, all of you have been, you know, hoping to, um, to, to bring together. So I, um, I would like to just say that even though it's a parallel line from the council to the mayor, there are many of us who have expressed our personal interest in coming along for this ride. Um, I know that we, and we've talked with the mayor and, and Jacob and Christopher in particular about how we could best be cheerleaders and, uh, encouragers of this process. So anything that council members can do not to, um, get in the alongside, I really hope that you all will call on us. And I just look forward to, uh, seeing how it all unfolds and how we're going to be a, a, a better Charleston as a result. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson, and, and thank you for your work on council as well. Chris, um, I know we need to sign off by five. That's about six, seven minutes away. Any other public input? We, we covered that, correct?
We have, Mr. Chairman, yes.
I'd, so I'd like to get any other feedback in these next few minutes from, um, commission members in terms of how often, again, we have a, a strong timeline here. It's aggressive. But, uh, we obviously have a meeting next week, a planning, a regularly planned meeting. It's going to be probably a little long meeting because we hadn't met in a while. But I'd like to get some feedback from, um, commission members as to how often we can meet, get updates, things like that. That would be helpful, I think, for staff. Would, Chris?
Sure. Chloe, you, you were going to say one other thing about the input. Did, did we miss something on input? I'm sorry.
No, you read, uh, oh, no, there is one additional comment that needs to be read into the record. That's the, um.
That was an online comment?
It was an online comment. It's on your desk.
Okay.
Give me a, come point it, well, I'll, I'll come point it out to you. Uh, Donna is, is raising her hand. Maybe she can speak live. Um, make sure you get that comment.
Okay.
Donna, you go ahead and, uh, then let's get that because we've got a, a five o'clock curfew, so to speak. Donna?
No, that's, that's fine. This is just, um, because this comment came up about, um, part, what's important to the comp plan is engaging any adj- adjacent jurisdictions. And with the Johns Island group speaking, I know like in West Ashley, we had St. Andrew's, um, PSD. Some, we have some incorporated, um, elements with the county that, that are almost donut hole around the city. I just want to make sure that in that process, we engage all of those different jurisdictions and, um, in our process because it's important. And I just wanted to point that out because like, for example, Daniel Island, part of it's in Berkeley County. James Island and Johns Island has multi-jurisdictional things that we have to kind of open that up and listen to those things because they cross over our city property and our planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Uh, Chris, did you have that comment you want to read and put to record?
Yeah, I do. And just to respond to Ms. Jacobs, those are all folks that are going to be key stakeholders on this. And, you know, we will definitely be involving all of those other jurisdictions, um, uh, definitely. So yes, I, I neglected to, this was sent as an internet comment. I'm sorry, I thought we were reading just letters, but I will read this internet comment too. This is from, uh, Susan Collins at 882 White Point Boulevard. Her comment is, "We already have too many hotels in Charleston to consider putting another large hotel at the Gateway Inn from James Island as unnecessary. The more hotels you build, the more tourists will come and overrun the city. Term at Charleston is at scale and you continue to allow people purely intent on profit. Blessing that appeal. What gives you that right? Where does it stop?" And I do think she may be thinking more about an item that's at the VAR, uh, this week. But anyway, that was submitted to Planning Commission comments, so.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Um, and again, I'd like for the, next, we only have a couple of minutes left from commission members. How often do you want to get updated? Uh, how often can we get updated? Any feedback? As often as needed, I guess. And that's, you know, to keep the process going. That's what I say. I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll meet as often as we need to, to keep the process going and to keep it moving along in a, in a good fashion.
Ms. Johnson, Mr. Lusain has his hand raised.
Hey, Mr. Lusain?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, um, I, I'm assuming that we're going to get notifications about all these public engagement activities.
Oh, yeah.
And I think that, um, you know, we're meeting monthly and given that, you know, there's six more meetings until the end of this process, well, I guess seven if you count next week's. You know, I think a brief update, uh, because at each meeting, um, I wouldn't think it would need to be long. But, you know, Christopher, that probably did be done by you or Chloe just to let us know significant milestones and so forth. And, you know, meetings that are upcoming that we might, uh, have otherwise missed.
Okay. And I, I would also imagine that as we get closer to, you know, having a draft, uh, later in the year, that there might be some sort of joint session with you all on council also in reference to that draft. And then of course, you know, our, our, that wrap up end of the year, but that part of the reason in getting it then is so we've got January and February to have discussions, to make revisions, things like that. So I would think there would also be other joint sessions in those months as well. So.
Ms. Johnson's raising her hand.
Does Johnson?
Oh, you can't see me, but I've been watching you, um, and listening. I think this, Mr. Lusain covered everything that I wanted to. I think just again, and I know I'm a broken record about this, but if we can get as much notice as possible, I think we can, I can certainly be as involved as, as need be. It's very important, even if there are, um, additional meetings. But if we could just have a lot of notice in this kind of weird environment we have, it's, it's helpful to have a schedule that we can stick to.
Good thoughts. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any other, uh, input from commission members? Uh, Chris, Chloe, did we cover everything we needed to today?
Think so.
Okay. Um, that being said, if there's no other input from, um, commission members, I think that's a good point as we need, as Mr. Lusain said, we meet every month. If we can allocate a little bit of time for updates and things for the record, that'd be great. I think that would be good. And, uh, uh, and just for the, Chris, I think we've got a pretty good agenda next week. So we need to plan ahead for that. I mean, we've been backed up. So just be patient. We'll get to it next week and hopefully get some things done. Uh, if there's no other, um, input, can we get a, a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lusain. Is there a second? Ms. Jacobs, thank you. All a favor? That's great. I'm assuming that's all good. Thank you. Thanks to everybody for their time and thanks staff for the good work and all the consultants as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.